Well, we heard some really exciting stories, dreams, and I think this is a continuation of what I mentioned with last time we visited Brandon's school. It was always amazing the resources, what Brandon does. And so Brandon appeared before us a couple of years ago talking about Bring It, and I thought, Bring It and a lot of the other initiatives that are going on Hillside, Brandon, why don't you introduce everybody? Go for it.
So there are four middle schools in Manchester, and Jen Gillis is the principal at Southside Middle School.
Four middle schools.
Jen's the principal at Southside Middle School, Forest Springs Dell, principal at Parkside. I'm the principal at Hillside Middle School. Bill Krantz is the principal at LeBlanc. So I met with Mr. Rafio years ago, and recently came back to Hillside just for a chat. And we talked about what's been happening since with this program called Bring It, as well as some stuff that's happening at the middle schools. He asked for us to come up here. A lot of this stuff, even the stuff we're going to talk about in the beginning, we're trying to do everything we can at all four of our schools to basically impact the entire city. So in brief, the program that the pink sheet you have in front of you, it's a program called Bring It. In January, we start our 11th year. Right now, the school district partners with United Way and I said, the acronym stands for bringing refugees, immigrants, and natives gently into tomorrow. In other words, our newcomers, our locals. And at this point, 11 years later, Tuesday, Wednesday nights, all school year long from 5:00 to 8:30, we offer homework help, indoor soccer, dance, a nursing program, STEM, art, anything we can put under our umbrella to get the kids to the school and then wrap them around with positive, fun stuff so that they'll realize they're enjoying being at school. A big addition right before Christmas, we opened two more nights a week on the west side of Manchester. For those who know Manchester well, the River Divides. So that's a big, big thing considering the increasing needs in Manchester. And that we don't even have, you know, Boys Club or Girls or Y and C over there yet. And we house at Parkside Middle School. So we service five to six hundred kids a year. And we have, we're doing a lot with the little. We have a lot of volunteers from city here, service learners from Snoo, from St. Anthony, et cetera. So pretty neat when we've been on the edge every year in terms of trying to survive financially. We're now in our second generation of kids, which is exciting. And then just recently, I spoke to Mr. Rafio about, those are some of the other slips you have in front of you. The last five years at Hillside, actually the last 10 to 12 years, the budget cuts, you're aware of the state's where those locals, few of us lost staffers after staffing. So how do you do that with less? And for us, the conversation doesn't start with money, right? How can we be creative? How can we be collaborative? So you see some brochures that some parents have helped us put together, so we have nice materials. We're trying to rebuild our library media center. We're trying to expand. We feel there's a real opportunity gap for our kiddos. And some of it's natural, some of it's man-made, meaning some kids were born black. And now the losses we have from year to year, you feel it's being compounded. So you complain about it, you try to do something about it. The pamphlets you have in front of you are things that we've been trying to add and grow. So at Hillside, for example, through our library media center and additional technology, it's not just about those two things, but through those things, trying to bring more and more opportunities back. Example, several years ago, a unified art class is your non-four class, right? So you went from 25 to 10 in my time at Hillside. So if your parents call you of an eighth grader, hey, my Johnny had an woodchuck, yeah. We want Johnny to have woodchuck, but here's why mathematics doesn't work though. So we're trying to bring opportunities back through increasing partnerships with org relationships in the community, with increasing club teachers who will be volunteered to do them. As well as these, in our case, at Hillside right now, we've created a makerspace and library and media hub. And there's several other components under that. So that's what we spoke about recently, and Tom asked that we come before you to maybe chat about it.
This is amazing. The research, I mean, the resource that Bring It makes available in this after-school program, is that, what is the budget for that? How much does United Way, it must be, you must come to United Way.
Since we started, we have three different fiscal agents. We're advised not to become another, either another nonprofit. So we went from the Boys and Girls Club to Southern Henshaw Services for the last four years with United Way, and they've been outstanding. So it might be around with a full-time, a full-time staff member in the $200,000 range.
Yeah, yeah.
But the bank, the bank for the buyer, 11 years in, it's probably a value of three to four million dollars because a lot of us are there working, I can pay for it. So there's a lot of in-kind value in partnership and community outreach.
Can you say a little more about unpack that time from 5:30 to 8:00? I mean, who's involved on me and how much?
Any student in this school district can come for free, grades four through 12. We only capped it at four because we felt it was a little too late for kids younger than that. Grades four through eight come from four to seven, from five to seven, and the high school kids come after that. And we have a homework room set up with all kinds of volunteers, as well as some talk.
Volunteers and teacher, or all the teachers?
Some teachers, some community members, some local college kids doing the service learning. Snoo's been great, St. Anthony's been great. We also fed the kids for the last couple of years. The individual programs are outstanding. Our first year, 11 years ago, when we're speaking, knocking door to door, looking for funding, a banker, or this very specifically, he thought dance and soccer, he said that, he thought that was fluff, but absolutely not. Anything to get the kids in. And then as soon as we get them in, we start standing towards the homework help. And two great success stories, we can't take all their credit, but two poster children for our homework club. They're the first generation, they're the first kids in their families from Somalia to go to college. Their roommate's at UNH, and they got a 4.0 their first quarter, their first semester, and they're going to get a, probably a 4.0 for all four years, and they're going to become doctors. And we played some role in that, but they came on a regular basis. So you wonder what things have you prevented, or what work could we be doing to prevent other things? So it's been amazing for 11 years. You keep finding ways to do things, and then the other obstacles that come in the way. So and these folks were doing the same things at all of our schools. So I think it's important to share that. My concern long-term is, and this has happened throughout the state, like these great efforts, individual or group-wise, to sustain these, I think we need to collaborate with a few folks to save one of the resources. It's not just one, what else can we?
If there's some, maybe you asked a question that gets the other talking, right? If there's some way to hear, well, not stuff, I mean, the Hillside was great, but it would be great to hear from the other.
Some of these guys probably knows one of the questions I'm going to talk about, which is this sounds like another really good opportunity to engage the parents as well, to give them voice and bring them into the system. So do you get them out sometimes on the evenings? And is there?
All right, so most of the pamphlets have been created by our parents. And we've driven long and hard for the collaboration with the parents. So yes, parents are a big part of everything you see in front of you.
It's an incredible opportunity, just when parents are picking up and dropping off, and especially sometimes the younger children. The high school kids tend to move on their own. But with the younger kids, it's an opportunity to engage in conversations and outreach that otherwise we probably don't get. We don't have that opportunity, whether it's work situations or just lack of comfort or familiarity. But they're going to come and pick their child up. I had the opportunity, I was at Hillside one night and met a family that was going to be coming to my school. They were being shown the Bring It program, it happened to be running at Hillside that night, so I had an opportunity to meet, and they were new immigrants. I don't think I'd have met those parents otherwise. So at least they had the opportunity to put a face and name together with, you know, with a situation or, you know, experience their child is going to have. So I think the ability to reach parents in a unique way is certainly one of the advantages. And Brendan talked about wrapping around optimal things for children as well. Children everywhere have a variety of needs, and certainly Manchester is no different in a lot of ways. We're actually looking to start building in some opportunities for, Parkside, as for example, hosts, as Mr. Adam Blue saw on Tuesday, a full food pantry that our families can access. Bring It now has access to that food pantry, for example. So it is not necessarily just Parkside students that will benefit from that aspect of the program. We're actually looking, some kids have what we, we sometimes would be surprised in our experiences where basic needs aren't met. Maybe they need a place to wash their clothes, maybe they need a place, something is, we take for granted. So that's another aspect of this that we'll be putting in. We actually have a company in this city that's going to donate laundry equipment so that we can set up and provide, you know, just a bit of a more community center, the community services aspect to these evening programs.
So let me share, I'm the newest to the group, so I've been with them for just about three years now. And, you know, the work Brendan has started is pretty remarkable. I will give a plug for the four of us. We are very lucky in that we have four brains to keep looking at how, when, and where can we go for help or support. I think my biggest plug today would be, we need help too. So as we kind of come up with these ideas, we're good about being clever, we're good about doing more and more with what we have at our hands, but we definitely move those partnerships. I was thinking with the Assistant Superintendent over in Concord and saying, all right, how can we bridge across? So we're lucky in that we have the four of us. We are more than willing to branch out to others, we're more than willing to bring others in. But we need some help in the work we're trying to push forward for not just our schools, but the city and then bigger picture of the state.
What we've been able to do is to manifest tangible ways to be able to help our families and our students. And in the world of education, the ability to form meaningful connections with our students and their families is hugely important. And if we can do that, then we can get them to achieve academically, et cetera. And then what I'm intending is sometimes we remain without knowledge to their plight. And Brendan has been great about providing opportunities for our community to be educated about the circumstances that a lot of our students are dealing with. Through no fault of their own, they might be living in a bit of an impaired environment, and we're simply trying to offer a handout and to identify areas of concern that we can try to help them to gain the skill sets to get through it. We're not going to make whatever the situation is necessarily go away, but maybe we can help them get through it and, you know, they can get the resilience and the grit to be able to succeed like those two students that are at New Bass now, and hundreds of other kids that have come through the program. There's been kids that are playing professional soccer, and there's just been endless examples of great role models for a lot of our students that are living in a real tough environment. And then I'll just echo Jen's, I mean, the four of us together, I've been a basketball coach for a long time, and it's the fist of five, the fist is stronger than the individual digit. And we are trying to do our best to bring our passion, intellect, whatever, to there for the benefit of our community. If we can use some problem.
Two questions. I know that you're on Chronicle, they have Michael Briggs Youth Center and a lot of the program. Do you coordinate or talk to someone, you know, in the boys' club, I mean, what they're doing and how you can augment each other and help each other out in Manchester?
Yeah, yeah. So for years where you're looking at grants, I'm sure you appreciate it, are you duplicating what someone else is doing? For example, in the beginning of Bring It, we used to have adult EL program or ESL program. Right down the street, English for New Americans, which is running even more robust programs. So we said, hey, why don't you go, you know, work with that program? We've all, in terms of MPAL, we encourage a lot of kids to go to MPAL. So I think the leaders of most of these organizations are in touch quite a lot. The Y and State, Boys and Girls Club, more than, I think more than ever, have really been working on the last few years. We're in touch with them a lot. So I'd say yes.
My other question, do you need more volunteers, like to work with the younger children in this type of thing? Is this a need, or do you have more than you need?
No, I think, I think, I think more than ever. Some are going, some are coming, some are going, some are staying, right? So I need to rejuvenate those.
My only thought was, I'm a board member, and we have, you know, real-world learning hours. And so many of our students have to do, you know, before they graduate, so many hours of community service. And I know many other school districts right around this area have the same thing. And I'm thinking if they were, you know, like the soccer and the dance, if these kids were aware of your program, I'm sure that you could get more volunteers from high school. Obviously, I don't know if you want the high school kids helping the high school kids with homework, might not be a bad idea. But particularly some of these other things, and I think this is an area you might look, who has, requires community service hours from their high school students? And maybe that would be something to tap, people that they can get there easily.
Thank you. If it comes to that, we'd love to make that connection.
Connect, and love for them to connect.
In Manchester, which is where I'm from, with the after-school programs, 21st Century Grants, we've had it done all the time, getting middle school students. Interesting, it's not cool. Who wants to go to the 21st Century program afterwards? The Boys and Girls Club can have a little bit more success, more sports area. What's your secret? How do you make it cool for middle school students to participate in these kinds of programs?
21st Century is, like, it's right at the school of the cloud, Clark. Bring It's five from nine. One thing we did for 21st Century, we're entering our fourth spring, so we created a soccer program that one didn't exist in the city. And we creatively did it with 21st Century and Bring It. And so that brought in instant big numbers to 21st Century, because they all have to become 21st Century members, or club members. So that's one example. You can probably do that with various sports or activities.
We just did that with Cheer as well. So I think one of our, we've been listening, and when we hear the kids start to talk about, we would like what if, when you start to hear that enough, and then you kind of farm out to figure out which adults might be willing to pull that activity. And right now, we're looking at volleyball is another big push for the spring. Kids are chomping at the bit. And I think our belief is, the longer we have them with us, the more we're working with them to do their homework and keep them connected to positive activities. We see them grow. So we hear it, and then we, like I said before, four brains. As soon as we start hearing it, we go back and look at how can we make it, how can we get it happen for them? So I think our kids know, if they want it, they got to work with us, want to figure out how to get it, get it, I believe.
A little later, we'll be talking about how to career and technical centers. And we've rooted to students who want to take woodshop and it doesn't fit with the scheduling. We're suggesting that you design clubs that are accommodating that interest because to go onto a technical center, reportedly have a foundation that's received in middle school so that you can ascertain what your interest is. So I'm just curious.
So through our last few years of fundraising through the English for New American School, we tried to add club forces to the day, teachers would volunteer to do it. In a period we call advisors, the first half hour of the day. We're trying to translate that currently to after-school opportunities. So one, or related to is the pamphlet you have in front of you, the fly for our makerspace we created in our library. We're trying to add that potential element, trying to add that element without adding a staff member. So one example that's bearing some fruit, a parent who works at Autodesk. If you work at Autodesk, any of the software at Autodesk schools can use. So he's coming in, our kids in his makerspace club, they determined our first round of purchases, including a 3D printer. His parent is coming in, he's going to teach one science teacher in all those classes how to use Tinkercad, which is a 2D version of AutoCAD, which teaches you how to run the 3D printer. So in theory, that teacher gets all his classes in through that day. Then how do you, then train the other eight teams within your building, academic teams? And in theory, you start to fight back all that loss from 25 classes to 10, now you're going back up towards 25. This is a long answer, but it's, we're fine. If you guys know a simpler one, or more folks want to get involved, right? So we're trying to scratch away at it that way.
The other thing we've done is we've reached out to other members of the community, the Greater Manchester Chamber of Commerce, and there are groups of people that have wanted to work through the schools for quite a long time. We've been able to realize that. So we, at my school, we had a Greater Manchester Chamber come through, they were able to do a tour. So they can put a, they can see for themselves what it is that we're doing and the needs that we have. And it isn't, like Brendan said, we're not just looking for money. If you want mentors, any of our engineers, for them, and we'll make use of any and all expertise in meaningful ways. I can get up as the principal and make a big speech about why I need to have certain qualities. But when some of the ones, the business comes in and says, I think they're going to write me a check, then they can listen a little bit more, for example. So we're very pleased, there's a lot, there's a lot of great people out there that want to help. They just don't know that they don't know. And we're trying to just educate them, you know, to what our needs are. And always being mindful of, not just asking for money, that's not what it's about. It's about, you know, how do we help our brothers and sisters, basically? You know, trying to get through.
I know we are all so impressed, not just with Bring It, but also what you're doing individually, from your schools, with your leadership, and with limited resources. And of course, after-school, that's always been a big concern of mine, it's a very dangerous time. So thank you. What can we do as a state award to get the word out? As we said, I mean, it's not just money, but it's also mentors and so forth. I know Fred Vermont, he has a mentor program here in Manchester. So what can we do as a ward to help you in this sort of world of limited resources?
I think, I'm sorry. Might help us to highlight some of these good things, but also saying, these are good examples, but in a lot of ways, we're still just treading water. And we have annual decrease funding or support, and you're losing, losing, losing. I think it's important for more people to become aware of the good, and also to realize this isn't good enough. It could be fleeting, if certain people walk away, the big chunks of it could fall. So how do you make it systemic and sustainable? And I think we all need to feel the urgency towards that end, because if not, our kids are the ones who are losing. And I think we all need to feel, I think we do, but how do we coalesce that sense of urgency towards this end? Because if you look back from 15 years ago, you see a lot that's been chipped away at. So I think getting the word out, as well as we get a call to, how can you get involved? Leading up to our school's annual event this year, this year or last year, I probably brought in 50 different individuals, including Tom recently, just to pick their brain. And I'm realizing that I have, we need to do this every year. Brainstorming, networking, informing others, which leads to the question, how can we get word out? How can we help? So I think what we have, what we're offering, probably from the state, and some reflection is for, it's not enough. Especially with the expectations we have. So these are maybe some examples. But I think like Bill said, there are more people out there that aren't aware of these things that I think would get involved. And so maybe just, you know, like, kind of the science for Justice for Autry, and the mental health program, those are everywhere. How can we get the word out to get involved more? Or PR, you know?
Market education.
Yeah. I think the other piece is, you know, the four of us are very lucky that we have four middle schools in the city, so we have this collaboration. A lot of districts, it's an A middle school, and so that person is really unknown. So I think if there's an opportunity to start to look at, how can we share? And how do we talk across the state? We're odd in education in that we tend to stay in our pods or our pockets, and we don't always go out. I think if we can keep pushing those conversations, because some of what we think about are what we do in our city. You know, I wonder what's going on up north, what's going on closer to the seacoast? Could we learn from them? Could they learn from us? So I think an opportunity for educators too, to keep coming back and, you know, highlight the good, but then take the good to that next level. So I think we've got to talk.
We talked about that as our portal, our website, to share these best practices. So thank you. Sustainability, it's funny because.
Tom, I just have one thought, a proposal. If you wanted to hold, because there's something about Manchester principals. Principals are all, you all are, I always strike me as, maybe it's the big city.
Leave it in a sentence.
And so if you were to put together a day that you would invite us, as many, maybe not just as many board members who could come, but more who, you know, and I wouldn't overproduce it so that it doesn't happen, but just a day in which people could learn and dig deeper into what you're doing. I know I would be there. And it would be a step in the direction of a megaphone and a way of both sharing ideas about how to build on it in Manchester and as, let me say, yeah, PR.
Justice Michael Briggs program was on Chronicle, contact them anywhere you are and see if you can't get them to come and highlight your program on television.
Have you ever been on Spotlight? It's a Comcast program where they come in and they'll do a, you know, review of your program, and then it's shown on channels in your area up to 1,000 times a month.
No?
So I would contact, I can try and find the contact.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, just throw one thing out there. If you were able to come in, see our city, you know, the schools, I think you would quite face some of those problems. Like 21st Century is a hugely important program for us. Hopefully, it won't get in trouble, but Full Day Kindergarten is a huge piece of the puzzle for us. You know, particularly with that population of kids that we're trying to serve, so we're just trying to provide some equity. And again, it's a lot of handouts, can we help, you know, make it so that these kiddos come in, they're not two or three years behind in their learning, through no fault of their own. And I say that with respect, I mean, I can't make a swoopy comment that all kids that come from where I grew up is, you know, they're going to have tough times. It's not always the case, but we do have a lot of technology and whatnot, you know, figure out where kids are at, and what's our response, you know? And a lot of times, it's more direct instruction, et cetera. And we need things like Full Day Kindergarten, 21st Century, et cetera. These are vital programs that provide huge services to families and students that are in need. So that's my plug for that.
Well, Angela, on our board now, on our board meeting schedule, we've had, we've had a board meeting, is that? In Manchester schools, so maybe we need to do that. Well, thank you. Certainly, we appreciate your leadership, and, you know, Brendan calling me was awesome, because I know that I'll find him in there at four o'clock in the morning. And I thought when I met you three years ago, that you'd be burned out by now, but you have more interview than ever. So I'm glad you're all collaborating, and more to come, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bring us back to our, which is Dylan, the greatest of the trees, and your traditional.
Hey, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
So this weekend, we had the opportunity to visit the forest, this school, as well as all the principals. Okay, so what was Preston and I told you about?
Thank you so much for having us here today. I wanted to know if it would be appropriate to start with the standards work and then go to the assessments? Or would you like to start with the assessments, and does it matter?
I actually had thought, like this kind of, I've been on the agenda before.
Right.
And I do agree that that would be more of our.
Okay, great. So let's start with the standards work. So as I mentioned, actually, can I stop for just a second? I just publicly, I want to thank those Manchester educators, while we're following numbers, but they're just, they're doing such great work and hard work, and it's really great when we can be reminded and conquered of what's happening. and it's really great when we can be reminded, um, and honored of what's happening on the ground, um, and always make sure that we're keeping that in mind. They are, they are doing a really great job for their kids, and they deserve to be committed to that, so I just want to say that. Um, so, as I mentioned last time when we were here, um, we had put together a, a very broad overview of a standards revision process. This isn't, um, the process that we put together wasn't, um, content specific, it was more along the lines of if we were ever revise our standards again, we want to have a clear process set out that, um, that would be very transparent, that folks can depend on, from the Department of Education, knowing that we will have to, you know, depending on the standard and what, um, what we're up against with, with that particular content area, that we may add things, take things away, that kind of thing, but we wanted some standard, um, process in place. Uh, we did this when we started with the science, um, uh, standards revision back a couple of years ago, so this probably looks somewhat familiar to you, because it came, um, before you at that time, but then when, last week, when Bill and Cindy, uh, they brought forward, uh, board members, I should say, um, they, the, the work that you had done, there was a lot of crossover, there's a lot of similarities in, in that work, and we actually, there were some things that you had put into yours that we really, really liked, and so like, for example, the guy in principals, he's very important, that should, no matter what standards we look at, we should have some value in principals around that. And so what we did was, we tried in, um, we tried to put all of that information that wasn't already in here, in here, I'm sure we missed a couple of things, that's why I'm hoping this conversation will, um, enlighten. I do want to just point out two, um, edits that I do want to make right out quickly, because I think they're very important. One, um, on your first page of this, does everybody have one of these in front of them? If you don't, I'm happy to just give you a copy of it.
It's not in my packet.
It is in your packet, okay, great. Um, so, under the goals, um, just completely inadvertently, we left out educators, so it should be with the goals of ensuring, um, educators, parents, and students, and then on the very last page, I don't know what I was thinking, but I put science under the last review, and under two thousand fifteen, that actually should be two thousand sixteen, because of course, we just adopted those, um, in November. So I just wanted to point those two things out, not to say that they're public, or edits that we want to look at within the document. So what we did here is, we broke this into a variety of different, um, areas, um, one, making sure that we have a strategic leadership team, and that leadership team, um, you can see who those engagement, um, members would be, and certainly we can add to them, we can take it away, we've, um, heard from Ms. Hoence about PIA, we can have conversations about that, um, but this is really the team that helps drive the conversation, the transparency, um, communication around whatever standards are, it's that external group that really holds the department, um, accountable in this work. Um, and then in the next page, you'll notice the nomination process for standards revision team, again, we're open to, you know, conversations about this, but we really felt it was necessary to have a process in place where people who are really interested in the public and being engaged in this work, have the opportunities to let us know that. So, um, we would solicit, um, application, put together some kind of simple application for folks to fill out. The other reason why we want to do this is, we want to make sure that we have geographical representation, that we have representation from a variety of the people that you see listed over there, I'm sure we're missing some group, um, but we wanted to make sure that we have, um, broad representation and have folks come to the table. Uh, just real quickly, the standards revision team work, of course, that's the majority of the year, if provided, um, we can have that, that year to do this work. Um, th- this isn't extensive, this is literally a short list of expectations, we would certainly want to work on much more detailed job description, if you will, of what needs to go into, um, the work that they would be doing. This is the important work, this is on the ground, detailed, um, pieces there. Uh, you'll notice on page five, that there are several drafts that would go into this, um, and I should have mentioned this before, but all of this work, um, I'm not going to take any credit for it, it came from all states who have been doing this work for a long time, they've gone through very similar revision processes and that kind of thing, so it's a stealing, if you will, a borrowing, as we say in our, in education, um, of other states and the work that, that they do, we're really good at sharing resources. Um, so it goes through a variety of draft phases, um, and this is to make sure that we're getting the public engaged, um, in that process, before we go too far down the road, that we're constantly getting input, um, from folks, and so you'll see the different drafts there. The draft two is probably the most significant process, that's when we do, you mentioned this in your document, um, as well as Cindy and Bill about the, um, the regional listening tour, making sure that we're getting out of the public and hearing from folks, and getting ideas. We also wanted, although not always ideal, um, it's a way to get people who can't come out to those regional meetings, get their input by doing a survey, um, there are a lot of really great examples of, um, standards revision process surveys out there, um, Ohio actually just did one, uh, that's pretty detailed, of, you know, looking through each standard and seeing where folks, um, would like to see some, you know, revisions or peeping or those kinds of things. So, we'd also, because we're the department, um, would like to do a formal, um, uh, hearing, if you will, um, and allow people to come in, um, to, to participate in that process. Um, even with this, we still want to have a committee of reviewers, I don't know if anybody remembers writing papers in schools, but in, in school, but sometimes you just need somebody who's never seen a board to look at it, and comes up, will always come up with ideas that way. So, having a committee of reviewers that's outside of the, um, the standards revision team, look at this, um, especially folks in, in, um, each of our grades that are working with our kiddos every day, uh, then we would also have that independent technical review, and I want to thank, um, Bill and Cindy for, um, making sure that we add that in there as well. Um, of course, final draft, we come for the board, like we always do, um, and then if you look at, um, the last page, there, what we, what we're trying to do is to put, um, even though it's, there's always been this, um, assumption that we have on, we actually haven't had, um, a revision process with a timeline laid out, so that folks in the field know what to expect. I think that's really important, uh, we might disagree with the timelines, and I hope we'll have a conversation about that, but, um, we really felt like it was important to make sure that we put something out to the field, so they can all be able to see it and provide, um, some context there. So that's the, that's the document, just a very high level overview of it, I'm sure you, um, already read through it, so I don't want to go into too much details, but is there, um, I'm sure that there are questions, I did receive, I apologize, just, just this morning, for coming to the board meeting, um, some thoughts and comments that you can have, so I haven't had the opportunity to look through them in detail, but certainly will, and, and, well, if there are any questions.
So beyond what's already in emails, do you have other, other, other thoughts?
Uh, the timeline, I just, we're on Earth if we're doing science. We, you know, as you said, we went through an extensive, extensive process of years, we did all of what this is based on, uh, there was a huge ask from most of our schools and districts, saying, please hurry up and get these, because we have already, to a certain extent, adopted next gen science standards, we've been working with them for several years, we are thrilled with the results, we kept hearing this over and over and over, and we kind of slowed the process down to make sure that we had input, and as you know, we went throughout the state, we did this, we did this, to turn around, it's like whiplash, what are we trying to give our schools and teachers, whiplash or something, like, what? You're doing this again? Uh, that, that should be put off, you know, a while, and to me, that just muddies the whole process by saying, a year later, we're going to start again, then it makes no sense. Um, you know...
So Cindy, if you may move on, maybe I can respond to that, because I think I probably am the one who's driving that, so we in the state are aiming for high standards, and that's really what we want, and I don't know if the review was done prior to the adoption by this board, or subsequently, shortly thereafter, but those have been evaluated by a third party reviewer and rated as a Steve standard, and so I've had communications with Barbara, um, much of the reason why those were rated so poorly, uh, was because of the process orientation to those, so when I look at this review, making sure that this is on the schedule, um, you know, it may not be such an extensive type of a review that a typical standard might go through, but just to make sure that, again, the reasons why that standard were rated so poorly, maybe we need to just add some content specific types of things to those, and so that's really why that's there and that's what I'm after.
Who's the third party reviewer?
So Fordham University, who is the third party reviewer of many of the standards, uh, you know, in the marketplace, are the guys who take a look at it, and, uh, so I just, I don't want to be the guy who's responsible for a C standard, like, we want to have A standards, and so I think the goal here is to make sure that we aim for a good high standard.
You know, in the, in the marketplace, I know Fordham has a more conservative view, I, what about, like, Teachers College of Columbia? Now, that's, I'm saying...
Fordham's view of the standards is from nineteen fifty science teaching. This is not a criterion for New Hampshire, and it's not respected as a reviewer of the science standards. We, we, our STEM task force, for, uh, studied this, and then we spent years as a board, working with state science teachers, who individually and collectively, as an association, arrived without any pushing from the state board, at the next generation science standards, uh, as what they would adopt locally, at least until the board finally, if they saw all of our, their actions. If you wanted to debate the, the quality of the standards, we must go far beyond the, uh, Fordham, uh, thing, uh, they're grounded in research in a way that is really unsayable, and this board got presentations on it, uh, our science teachers reviewed that research, uh, it, it's really not up for serious debate, and so the idea of communicating to the field some ambiguity about our commitment, or pullback from our commitment, is just, from this one, speaking individual board member, out of the question. This, this is something that has been fully, uh, it's owned by the board, right? It's not a department issue, it's the board's standards, and the board put the department and the field through a long process of adopting these standards, and, and Fordham, for instance, is not a Russian arm for relooking at the question.
So, just to respond to that, um, what I will tell you is that we have historically on this board, in some cases, actually said that because Fordham rated a standard high, that was the reason for selecting a standard.
That could be more more accurate.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that we have to decide, that either Fordham has meaning, you know, they're an independent, third party assessor, and then there are, have been circumstances, and this board, where we, where we have relied upon their good assessment of something, um, and so there are going to be opportunities where, uh, we may not like what they've done, but I think it's important for us to make sure that we aim high for our students, our students deserve the very, very best, and so it may be, uh, that we go through this process, and again, in my conversations with their science specialists, we've talked about the nature of these, uh, being, you know, that the current standards that we have being very process driven, which is an appropriate thing, but if there are content deficiencies, I think that we do our students, um, a disservice by not making sure that we have the highest possible standards available to them, and so it may be that we go through this process, and again, it is the purview of this board to make a decision about what standards we either have or we don't have, um, but it is the responsibility of the department, and me as the Commissioner of Education, to make sure that we aim for the best educational opportunities for our students, and so that is what we were reflecting, uh, in this process, and that is why it's on the list. Helen? Okay, we've got to go to Helen. Bill, Paul, and I say, we go to Helen, and then we're back.
If you, uh, have a fatigue, not a reference to Fordham, but an actual fatigue of a certain content areas that need to be enhanced, you should bring it to the board.
That's what this process will do for us.
No, it's not the part, the board will not mandate a process if the, if the depart, or I will propose a, uh, a motion to that effect, uh, and so if the, if the department mounts a rogue process, and the, uh, community, the, the, uh, education folks out who would be on these committees, uh, and parents and others, uh, for some reason, would decide to participate in these unauthorized rogue processes, I guess we can't stop you from doing that, but, uh, across, after two years, um, and deep, uh, engagement on board's part, the notion of communicating to the field that there might be a, a, a further change in standards, and they should put off the textbook purchase and so on, uh, because a new commissioner thinks, and there's really no pushback from any other direction, uh, from the field, from anyone in New Hampshire, so we've got a new commissioner who thinks this needs to be redone, is, uh, is an unnecessary, confusing message to the field. So, I would suppose, if we get, uh, to that point today, that the, uh, the board made a very clear statement, uh, so that nobody needs to be confused, that we are not going to re-review the standards.
So I would hope that you would reconsider, because as with any of our standards, and particularly in the area of science, there are changes that take place, there are new scientific discoveries, there are new scientific processes that come about, and I would hope that this board would support a commissioner who is interested in making sure that we have standards that represent the most contemporary, the most cutting edge opportunities for our students, and that, I would hope that you hold me to the expectation that whether it is, uh, in the science standards, or in any of these other standards, that you say, Frank, we want to make sure that we keep our standards current and contemporary to the environments in which our students will be graduating into, so that they can be best prepared to enter the workforce. And so that is the work that I will do, and I will tell you, I don't describe that as a rogue process, I describe that as my job, to make sure that the students have the best opportunities, and so I will continue to do that, and then it will be the purview of the board to make decisions about whether or not they think that changes that I bring to them are required or not, so, Helen?
Um, a couple of, right after our board meeting last week, um, there was an article in the Nashua Telegraph, that said the State Board of Education is, is, uh, considering revising their science standards, and that we had discussed that at the last board meeting. I looked at the agenda, I looked at the minutes, and I looked at our tape, um, which was three plus hours long, and we did not talk about changing the science standards. If anyone recalls hearing something differently, I hope you will correct me, but I, we, it is my recollection, we did not talk about revising the science standards, because I think I would have had the reaction that I had when I read in the Nashua Telegraph that the board is considering revising our science standards, since we had just spent two years in an incredibly open process, hearing from experts, hearing from teachers, hearing from the field, doing, listening to all the things we're talking about doing here, we did. It was not a casual, gee, what's the latest and greatest in science? We'd watched it in practice at Sohegan, we did our due diligence on this, um, and so I was very confused about that, and it led to a decision in Nashua, where there was a motion made to put off purchasing textbooks and developing curriculum, because we are going to change our science standards. Um, the document we've been handed today, Academic Standards Revision Cycle, and Heather, maybe I, I misheard you, but I thought you said, you won't necessarily do them, but this would be sort of an opportunity for us to... That's not what this says, and this says academic standards to be revised, when the last review was, and I appreciate the correction to twenty sixteen, since on our website, it says, and that the State Board of Education adopted the next generation science standards on November third, twenty sixteen, it says that. Um, easy mistake, and I understand, and I appreciate the correction. Next to it, it says the revision start, July twenty seventeen. These standards are the State Board of Education's standards, we have not said we are going to start a revision process, um, I've been contacted by the, um, Chair of the Nashua Um, I've been contacted by the, um, Chair of the Nashua Board of Education, who was confused and sent me, there's a motion pending before their board on Monday, saying, don't do anything because the State Board is going to change in this, a draft that we hadn't even discussed, that had been sent to him. That concerns me greatly, that this draft that we had not even discussed is now the subject of the second-largest city in the state's, um, Board of Education, saying, and, and the reason, and, and I'm not, certainly not going to, because the, the, the board member who taught, who was quoted in the article said, "The political winds are changing, and we should, um, we should hold off before we do anything." I'm not going to attribute that to anyone here because it was a member of the State Board of Education. But our science standards are not whimsical. They're not subject to the political winds of change. These are academic standards that we looked at for two years before we made a decision to leave anyone in the state, not just Nashua. Obviously, I represent Nashua, but I represent all the, um, students in this state. But for teachers to be confused, which way are we going? Are we going to maybe change next week, next year, whenever? And to have a document that says we are doing a revision start in July 2017? That, that may be a whole nother problem, why this was in someone's hands before we even had an opportunity to look at. But, um, I, I'm really just talking about this. I, I have a, a number of concerns about, um, the document generally. But this, this is not a, a suggestion here. This is, we are going to do it, and it's being relied on in the community, in the state, and that is inappropriate. And that these standards have been approved, we're not revising the standards. This board has not talked about revising the standards. And if at some point we decide that that's what we want to do, this sort of a notion that's represented on this page, I think, is completely inappropriate and entirely unusable by districts to think, hmm, they're going to start doing another revision. I have not heard one word from board members that we have said we're going to revise the standards. I think we'd be irresponsible to do that. Look, and, and commissioner, if at, at some point you bring to us something that you want us to look at and consider based upon, uh, something that's missing from those standards, maybe, maybe we'll do that, but that's different than this. Telling districts, we know you've, about ninety percent of the districts are using the Next Generation Science Standards. And they're happy about it, and they're doing great work, and we've seen that work. The ones that haven't to say, yeah, we're going to take another look. We're not, we're not really sure. We're sure. I, I, I am confident that this board is sure that we passed those standards, and they're not, we're not going to decide again in July of this year to redo them. That's completely irresponsible. And, and this document talks about generally, we'll look at things every eight years. I mean, and that's not hard and fast, and, and I understand that. But with respect to, um, having any district think that they're whimsical, or, you know, are the political winds change standards? The Next Generation Science Standards, I think, is an incredible disservice. And we have lots more to talk about here, but I just, I needed to talk about this and the impact, the very real, not could happen. This is a very real situation, and it's a motion pend, that, that is pending before the National School Board this, this Monday. And that, that can't happen based on us saying, nah, maybe they're going to be revised.
I think that the three of us saying, are very passionate about this because we've been through this process. We were the ones that sat here for several years and listened to the presentations from university people, from all that. Many of us attended the public forums where we heard the comments from the people that were using these, you know, that had already adopted the districts, that already adopted the standards, and wonderful things that were happening. So we're really passionate because this is something we believe in. And boy, you know, like I say, I'm on a local district. I know the processes that involve, go with curriculum change within the district. We have a curriculum committee. We work on those things. I sit on the professional development committee within my district. I know how the Curriculum and Technology Institute that we have at the end of the school year, they, they plan for the next year. And then the professional development goes on, all the plans go on, the standards and everything that we're developing for our district. To, like Helen says, this, this would create chaos. This would create extra money spent. This would be ridiculous. I mean, I know science, there's always things happening. And the teachers in the district stay aware of this, and they react, and they're not just waiting for us, okay, can we move? Can we do something else in biology? No. They work with what we have set, and they develop their own curriculum, and they move it forward. But to go through a tremendously inexpensive process and then go through this whole scenario in a year when you've got all these others that will demand so much time and effort on the State Department and people throughout the state of the standards like math and ELA, and those that have had a longer timeframe. With science, absolutely, we are passionate about what we have, the work that we have done and the steps forward that we have made.
So you pointed to me as somebody who shares that passion and reports that case. I don't recall a time where I felt more diminished sitting on this committee. And I've never been more certain of anything that we've done in the past on these science standards. And this comes from two perspectives, not as just somebody on the Board of Education, but as somebody who is an industry, whose business depends upon the future of those of the sciences. So I have walked out of school districts affirmed by what they were doing. We did our due diligence, and I've walked out optimistically that we're absolutely and positively on the right path. So to send any message that we're backing up or not fulfilling that responsibility that everybody understands is more than problematic. It, it, it possibly feeds a cynicism, which is the last thing we really need right now. So I...
So I'm going to... I know there's other input on this, but if you want to put the science standards in a department, make a motion, uh, we have gone through the process. In my, my point of view, you know, I, I have comments to output, you know, in terms of community engagement, and I was probably the one that slowed down the process because a couple of board members did say that, you know, as far as we spend ninety percent of the schools are already using Next Generation Science Standards, and they were just thinking that we were, yeah, come on, let's move it. So I heard that, but I actually slowed it down because I'm very old Republican with wanting, you know, wanting to, you know, make, you know, make sure that it's, it's, it's correct. So I think, um, and it, and it's a huge, to do it right, it's a huge, as you know, as the commissioner knows too, it's a huge resource. So while certainly I'm open to whatever other benchmark data from time to time that that one brought forward, you know, we can take a look. But it sounds like the majority of the board is saying, and I would maintain a motion, that the science standards were done, and they're blessed. We went through a very robust and rigorous process and to pull it out of this plan, so something.
So move...
So I don't, like, say even that either.
I, I, I'm new to this. I, I appreciate all the work you've done. I'm concerned, what is the mechanism for change? As standards become outdated, if they are already outdated, what is the mechanism for change so that we can deliver the absolute best we can in science and technology to our students? Because we all know that we, we operate with the offices that we are preparing children to be career and college-ready. The majority of careers now are technical components. That changes daily. How often do you change your Apple TV and your, your cellphone? So how do we ensure our, our, our communities that we are on top of this? So what is the mechanism for change as, as these standards are assured to become outdated? Well, computer science and, and the tech, you see, those are two separate ones, and they'll be dealt with, and we can, and, you know, look at those. They're so new in our schools that they, they have not been set in the past.
I, I just wanted to, um, believe it may have been November, we also, this board also talked about us putting this kind of process into a rule, which is now required, I'm forgetting which, all I say is, but it was just passed last year to put, um, the academic standards process into rules. So that's one way that we can guarantee is working with you all through the regular schoolmaking process to ensure that standards are on a revision cycle, whether it looks like this or something else. But that's something that we have to provide for you in the, in the future.
Yeah, and, and in the interim, it's, it's, as Cindy said, and it's happening organically. That's the beauty of the Next Generation Science. It is happening organically. So if there is a new discovery that's, you know, the Next Generation standard, obviously the science teachers, you know, will teach that. So I think, I think we know we have to look at these every, whatever it is, seven years. But I'm sure that, um, that we can make that quicker if, if we need to. But I do, I do think it happens organically, and, uh, so I would support my own word. I was just saying, I just...
I, I have a motion, Tom, if you want.
Can I speak, can I speak to this?
We're, 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 so the board gives a second. You proposed a motion, I've got a motion.
Okay. Well, I, what I suggested was that, um, from this, I know there's other input throughout this, which we have to get to. But if it's sending, if, if this, however this document got out to the public, if it's inadvertently sent the next message, which is inhibiting local boards and local school districts from doing a job, we want to send a new message. What I was saying is pulling out this because they, they were just, just went through two years of this. So that's what I was saying. So there was, Gary moved that, and Cindy seconded it.
Uh, yeah, no, I mean, I just put words to your...
Okay.
Then make it a clear motion. It's not, it's not an alternative. The State Board of Education states clearly and with no ambiguity that, having just spent two years of intensive review, monthly presentations and public forums, reviewing the New Hampshire College and Career Ready Standards, and on November 3rd, 2016, adopted, adopted the Next Generation Science Standards as our New Hampshire College and Career Ready Standards. The board will not consider, will not reconsider its science standards. And then we could put some kind of ti, I don't know, we want to put a...
Until, yeah, you need a date there because we're going to do it, you know.
Right. Uh, what about that? You want to put it? A date, or how do you want it?
It seems like we need to... I asked consideration. We need to put a date that we start, like, you have the dates here, and it's interesting, the help, which was 2003. They're not going to look out to 2018, and then 2021 are ours. So let's put a date.
Well, uh, what's your plan? What kind of date could it be?
Uh, well, we usually do it on an eight, you said an eight-year cycle? So, so 2020, 2024, 2024. It seems like it would be reasonable within the parameters of what kind of practices it's been. And, you know, here it is, no curriculum. I mean, they can, as soon as something new would come, and, you know, the thing that's circling Saturn, and all of a sudden it's going down, and maybe they discover there is this life on Saturn. Aren't you just going to wild with that? I listen to NPR, science Friday. What I'm saying is, you know, they can put new things into the science curriculum all the time. We're just saying these are the standards that you must shoot, and then you can go excitingly, like, in the same places.
So I think that addresses, you know, two parts of questions.
Well, I've just got a little bit to finish it. And any review effort should be considered a rogue effort and will not be considered a...
We're not going to do that.
How would you say that we've, so I want to keep it really simple, which is, hopefully, just completed a two-year process of reviewing the science. We heard over and over, we're going too slow organically therein. I was going to slow it down. It's been robust. Just seemingly we approved it. We have to send a clear message to the community. So it's been moved and seconded, and then we have, you know, and then you know it's curriculum, and so if there's a discovery in Saturn and all that type of stuff.
Would you want some evidence of that?
Gary and I seconded it. But it seems like the mo, you know, here, we're not voting on the motion, we're back and forth. But something about, you know, that we would, um, in this process, we would move the revision date to start the process again on the science standards for 2024, you know.
So if you read your motion, getting rid of that last piece, like, putting that there.
I mean, is that...
Embracing, thank you.
That would give you the chance to go to the executive. The State Board of Education states clearly and with no ambiguity that, having just spent two years of intensive review, monthly presentations and public forums, reviewing the New Hampshire College and Career Ready Science Standards, and on November 3rd, 2016, adopted the Next Generation Science Standards as our New Hampshire College and Career Ready Science Standards, the board will not reconsider its science standards until 2024.
I concur.
Okay, Ian?
Um, that's actually a ten-year cycle rather than an eight-year cycle because you begin the cycle when you started reviewing the standard, not when you finished. So you now change your cycle from eight years to ten years, which...
It's adoption to adoption.
Pardon me?
Adoption to adoption. I mean, the count is from when they're adopted to when they're not.
I think that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, ma'am?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to ensure, it's just that whenever we have, um, a, a due date coming up, we usually start in advance. We don't wait until the due date. So, um, I know we're working on, like, the credential standards. And so, you know, those are going to be expiring in the fall. We've already been working on it, so it's, it's not like a late...
It was a suggestive name, but... I think what she's referring to is that this has a start date.
Yes.
Which is what she's referring to. And so the start date is ten years out is the point.
So, so it just, if I could continue, I spent some time with California and the whole process they went through. Kentucky, I've been trying to do my due diligence and keeping up and seeing how other people are doing things. And, um, minimally, I would think in a two-year process, minimally, as far as beginning a revision and following through California. Took a four-year process. They are just really moving things, you know, forward. But the, the districts have been working along that, so, because they knew that revision process isn't...
Okay, so, so on, on that motion, if you want to have it, that maybe includes 2022?
Well, or in response to that, maybe, maybe the last sentence says, "The board will not adopt revised science standards until 2024." Then, then the review could...
These are never, or this, this specifically lights out when it starts.
I do not want it to start with that, but sending that same next message. And that's why I think a date certain has to be in there because school districts can't say, well, that could mean they're going to start next year.
Perfect. So, yeah.
So we're saying, I guess, according to what Ann says, maybe if, here we keep changing this motion, we're about to rest. So if, if we wanted to, the revision to be finished by 2024, or, or institute, maybe say revision start date is 2022. Because like Heather says, we haven't had this type of formula before. And so for establishing this formula, and we want the revision to take to be in existence in 2024, then 2022 doesn't make sense.
Okay, because you heard the mark of the two-year process. So, so it would be, adoption would be in April of 2024, the start date of 2022?
Yes.
That would be in the motion, okay? Is that Gary, you get it from me? Okay, so you heard the motion, everybody clear? It's great. This was a really helpful discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so taken here that hopefully for the Nashville community, they are clear on that. Okay, and any other community that...
Is there any, um, um, now that that's settled, on this point about, uh, distribution of the board pack to the public? pack to the public, is there any need for discussion of that? I don't know what our prime protocol is.
Well, the package is of public record, right?
Well, is it before the meeting? I mean, I don't know. When things are drafts and we get a package that's thick, could that just as well be on a website somewhere, other than obviously the, the non-public appeal and.
If you want to take a break in that conversation, you can do that.
Okay.
I know locally, we get, the agenda is publicized, the back information, this is on a local thing, is, goes only to school board people until it becomes part of the public record after the meeting, but we get, everybody gets the agenda of everything that will be discussed. I don't know if that's what it, is common practice.
That's what I had thought, our, until Helen said that.
Well, you guys can proceed. I mean, I don't want, no, I don't want to break, I mean, it's, it's a legal question in terms of, I know the, I know, it's a public call, I've seen the agenda, so I know that's out there, so the only question is, the supporting materials, which I also thought was out there, I think, I think the real question was, this was not in last month's package, but what you were saying, Helen, like, is that what you're saying?
There was a two-step process. The first was that there was a representation that we, at our last meeting, had said we will continue to do this.
Right, okay, so.
And then the second part was a subsequent contact, so after this came out, we went to the national board.
Okay, so the first one would be all speculation, you know, having dealt with a lot of reporters over the years, they know, so I don't want to get into that. As far as the question of a document, as a department document, how it goes out, and that's something we can ask, but, so I don't know, did this have, did this go out to people besides the board?
Because Helen has mentioned that it passed, my assumption is that it did somehow get into the case of someone, I do allow them to.
Sometimes it's on the national board, just raise your hands, okay.
I asked for a copy after the last meeting, because you were discussing it, and they said we slid in with the two different documents, they gave me the one consolidated one, which I got a day or so ago, and I shared it with my board, but I did not say what a board member, who I said, he said this was just a draft, it was going to be discussed, and there's significant opposition to next generation science on our board already, so we were just taking in context what's going on.
Okay, so, so in the first part, would all be speculation as to why a reporter made that speculation? Second, we have an answer, which was, this, the process was discussed, the board memo, that he said we'd integrate with this, Doris made a request, someone from the department sent it, so that explains that, so I'm fine. Separately, Aaron, as you're reading, if you could just find out the answer to what's available to the public, and we can do that, hopefully you can all be.
But just, but just to focus, um, two more to extend, and in what way, is the board's pack available to the public before.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, I thought I said, that. All right, what the department team sends out, I mean, that's, that's, so we should get the answer to that, so we don't have to get the Russians involved. Actually very clear with that. Reporter made an assumption, Doris requested this, got it from.
No assumption, was there?
Well, I'm just saying, a reporter, who knows why that reporter said that. Okay, but we've clarified, we now have a very clear motion, and I'm not going to be looking at the standards, you know, beginning of the revision process until 2022. So this is televised, promotions are minutes, everybody's clear, so if there's any school district out there that needs that clarity endorsed, I assume you'll bring that back to your meeting Monday night, and so I think we've been absolutely clear on that, so we have to move on, because I looked at this as a resource, and putting aside, you know, we just did, I mean, the rest of this, it's, to do it right, as you all know, is a huge resource being, Frank's saying, limited, limited resources, so if nothing else, we focus on where we actually, we need to get going on revisions on others. Now let's spend, spend time on that, I'm sure we don't regret that, so proceed, pulling out the end of the next year's.
Having the agenda, I mean, sort of map for reviewing academic standards in time of, for ELA and Math Revision. But that isn't really the style of the.
So this, if you take off this last page, okay? There's two purposes for what, what we sent. This right here, the reason why you don't have, I know this is one of the issues that was brought up, anything in the timeline area, is because we will input, once we start the process, or before we start the process, but every, we want to use the same process, or pretty much the same process, every time we go through the standard revision.
So this is, so this is, you know, internally, this is a framework.
This is a framework.
That we're hoping for input on, and then we flesh out that framework for the implementation.
Yeah, so, so that, so if you, you remove this, which we, which we also believe we need to have set in stone, because we need to be able to, like Helen was mentioning and Ann as well, to let folks know when we're going to be doing these things, right? So we, we think we certainly need agreement on that at some point. And then just the concept that goes into this, again, we may put more things into it, depending on what we're talking about, we may say, you know what, this isn't necessarily needed, that's a conversation we need to have publicly and transparently, about what this will be, but we need some kind of framework, one, for no, sorry to be selfish here, but we need to know what staffing is required, when we're going to be doing things and that kind of stuff. So knowing what that process is that you would all like to see us engage in, I think is really important for all of us going forward. Again, there is similar, we actually added some things to destroying the science revision process, that we heard from this board as well as from the public, of what they'd like to see in here, so it's actually much more robust, well, not much more, but more robust than we had before, but it just is, gives us a.
So let's, let's cross out our work today, so the template that Frank described is a template process for any standard review that will go through this process.
And we would have a timeline.
I, I got it, I finished, okay, so, so let's get to that, and feel comfortable with the framework, or whatever, then we can get into the specifics, then, so let's start with, like, example, engagement, we're working on public comment, and so is the engagement, is there too many, too few, not enough, there's some common on homeschools, I don't necessarily see it there, but. So just to refer as well, this is pretty much, other than the additions from those input last time, you know, and this is pretty much the process that you all use, they could just endorse for your science standards, this was pretty much the framework that was deployed to develop those. Right, and which is why I'm thinking this, at least on this, we will not get a lot of input, because this is what actually worked pretty well for science, but, but are there inputs on, on, again, on the guideline?
I would ask, please.
Again, from our focus being college and career ready, I would look at it through that lens, that is, is the standard directed toward being college and career ready, because when it was revised the last time, that was not, that was not a state focus, that was not a state board of education focus, having education being, am I correct, I was a mirror?
You mean, you're talking to the others other than science, is that what you're talking about?
No, that, that, the overarching view of the state board of education is that the education we provide for children should prepare them to be college and career ready, so naturally the standard should follow the same premise, so my question is, that would be what I might be, unlike the past process, this process, is that would be a question I would be asking.
Yeah, so notice, like, look at it with a fresh eye and say, did we make sure we capture that, you know, spirit in the document throughout the process? Yeah, so we're asking that, the salient point throughout the process.
And on Ann's point, you know, I was looking at the competency, do the standards serve as an effective guide to help students achieve academic proficiency and mastery of academic content? College and career, I think that's going to be all that, you start there, you know, you want those things, but then you want more, you want them to be ready to move confidently into careers and, and, you know, as we've said, there's a lot more to, than just being a, you know, some of those words mean different things to different people, but in the field, it's kind of like academic content, that's great, but here again, what can I do with what I know? And that's that next step, that we hope to put in our standards, so we expect more of our students than just, they have to have the facts, but then they have to move beyond the facts, and create and do, and, you know, that might.
So we can, we can make that deeper, I think that's the intent where it talks about, that the achieved proficiency is the basic understanding, and mastery of the academic content, so in the educational vernacular, the thinking is that that's the higher level learning that we're after.
Well, no, I think mastery of academic content is not moving to the next step of college and career, I think that's stopping at, mastery of content.
So that was, you can change the wording, but again, so proficiency is, you got the blocking and tackling, mastery is the higher learning.
Yeah, exactly.
So we can use a different word if mastery, does it mean that to you?
No, other than, just academic content, I think we need to add to that, to make sure we're really saying what we mean.
Okay. Are there any points on that template?
I review the template as, if it were not understanding that it wasn't intended as the framework of the plan for the ELA and Math. So you have my, and I, I don't need to read all of this in the meeting, but I think that either for ELA and Math, or actually for other standards, a lot of what I'm saying is still applicable, and that is, that it looks to me as if this template, framework, anticipates rewriting the standards from scratch, you know, that's, or, yeah, potential, which is no public with it, so I'm not sure what, you know, what scale, when you're taking, you anticipate, but.
If you look at, if you look at page four, Bill, just the fourth bullet there, and maybe it's just, maybe we just need to put the order differently, is for, for the team actually conduct that review of our current standards.
Because it's all in the negative, there's nothing there about keeping the positive things that are going forward, you know, that's so negative, that's what I put, that's like.
I didn't read that, right, that's a good, that's very good, thank you.
Things like determining the aspiration that grounds and focuses, I mean, my, my first feedback was that the leadership team needs to report to the board, that it's the board's standards, it's not the inviting team to the department, so that, right off the bat, and that team should establish such fundamentals as whether there's any change in aspirations of the ground and focuses for academic standards. And then the seventh bullet on page four says, determine what components the academic standards should contain. That review, review research, that is not a review of your current standards. Now, I don't know that this framework is sufficient for both the common core standards that we're talking about currently as the basis for the New Hampshire standard, and the social studies standards that might be a dozen years old, right? There could come to be a time when the state would need to budget for the prospect that it would be writing its own standards almost from scratch rather than reviewing what's in place. My focus is only on ELA and Math, so when you apply this bullet to ELA and Math, I'm saying, I don't get the relevance of determining from scratch what components.
Well, and I, this is the facilitator in me coming out, though, which may be completely annoying, but it is, I think it's always really good to have a team, especially a team that's going to be significantly large, to ensure that everybody is on the same page of what we want to see come out of this at the end, what are our expectations? And that, not that that, not that that means we're starting from scratch by any of these, but if you don't go into a process with everybody being in the same page of what are the overarching guiding principles, aspirations, components, and by components is not, it's not necessarily the details of what goes into each standard, but just the components, just in general, of what we want to mature, what are those, what's that process look like? People tend to go in different directions because they have a different expectation in their mind of what is going to come out in the end, so I think it's always good, and that the only reason why that's there is to make sure that everybody's on the same page in the beginning.
Just, why don't we just talk about it explicitly? Is what is in your mind as you do this, a review, starting with the current standard, and changing as teachers and parents and maybe students and student attendants, who have used the standards over a period of time, have noticed that, wait a minute, we need, if we were to do it this way, it would be clearer, or if we changed the grade level, that would fit our people better, or if, whatever. Which of those two paths do you see this going?
I think, I mean, I can respond to that, I mean, I think that that is, it's really two steps, it's not kind of an either or, so it is, take what we have and, you know, organically collect the feedback that we have from having used the standards for a number of years, to make sure that we can incorporate them if there's grade level changes or some wording changes that need to take place. But as well, and again, going back to the previous conversation, and the need to aim high, we need to then take this standard and reference it as well against, you know, highly ranked international standards, because we don't compete only in our own little domain here anymore, we compete in an international economy, as well as there are other states who have gone through this revision process, and their standards are highly rated as well, so if they've got stuff, we'd hate to roll ours forward, and they've identified gaps that we somehow missed, so we reference against high outside standards as well, and it's the combination of those that are synthesized into a New Hampshire standard.
Okay, so as long as it's like that, right, and we're not, there's no notion of scouting from scratch.
That would be an insurmountable task.
It, it, it should be considered an insurmountable task. Then, but the piece I'm missing from here is what you just said.
We can make that more clear, sure.
Frank, about the early feedback, there's no pre, unless I missed, I didn't see any reference to the website where people get to put in the standards by standard, or feedback, or.
On the current standards.
On the current standards?
Yep. Yeah, we had it in the, in the, in the second part, but we can put it in the first part, too?
Well, it's the upfront, I mean, because if everyone reports back, like in Kentucky, people say eighty percent of the feedback was, we need no, no change, and then they made a number of changes, but they learned, they're cogment. It's the upfront feedback in which teachers and parents are weighing in on their seven years of experience up to now, and the authoring groups may have no work to do, or, plus which, if you organize that feedback well enough, it's very focused, so that you know you're going to.
There's a lot of.
Standard number three, eight, point four, because there's a lot of feedback on it, and, and so on, whereas if it's, if the feedback is, you all come, let's talk about it until we're satisfied, you, as staff, you have very little. So if, if, if we're agreeing that we're in a revision process, certainly there's no reason to do it with blinders, you work all around the world for enhancements, but then, then.
Oh, sorry, no.
Then I, I think, I mean, I've got a lot more, but I'll give somebody else a chance.
First, a question, can I share what you said, based on the feedback you've gotten over the years, does that maintain somewhere, or where is that?
It is none, so I would say that that's probably the type of collective feedback that Bill was talking about.
Okay.
Not that I know of, is it maintained? No, we don't have. No, we don't have, yeah, we just have anecdotal information that has come in, but we don't have a database of critiques.
So again, you put on the process.
So we'll move to the...
What I'd love to do is take this, Bill, you've actually offered to sit...
We've been trying to develop, or we've tried to develop.
Right, yeah. So what I'd like to do is try and put another draft together, Commissioner, if that's okay, and bring that forward into the future. We are, in order to do our timeline, we do want to try and get this to a place at the next board meeting, which is May eleventh. It's amazing, isn't it? And, you know, get this into a place that you're really comfortable with. So I don't know if the work session is in order.
Well, I'll leave it like this. I mean, you heard some input today.
Yeah.
Anybody that has a wish, I'll hear from you in a second. Just continue to email it. What would you say to kind of obviously get the package that we're able to work in?
Two weeks before, a week and a half before would be... Yeah, so we'll spend the next two weeks getting...
Okay. We can do that. And once we're done with the process, we will talk about the dates in a second.
Going to chart on page eight, it refers to social studies starting at April seventeen. Computer science, April seventeen.
Last one, right?
Yeah, so as we are in April.
Yeah. We started this a little while ago.
Okay, we'll get to the times in a second, but any more process? I mean, I know you have more offline, but yeah.
You're going to take your own time.
But just to be clear about what you should bring. I think the framework is a good thing for the department to be working on. And, but the immediate issue is the English and math. So it should be a proposal with a timeline and a budget and all the details, what committees and everything, everything for the next meeting for English and math, right?
We can do that, sure.
You may not have all of the folks recruited at that point in time.
No, 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 not even the names necessarily. Just the, because it's just the plan, right?
I will let you know, we are staffless right now for this process. We're in the process of, we've put out the...
We have some openings.
Yeah, we have some openings, and we're going to be hiring somebody. So that will help, but we have, going back to your timeline, we should...
The timeline sort of assumes we're doing a whole lot in April. We have not had an opportunity to consider, and I would ask that this come back to us.
Well, again, again, I want to spend time now on this timeline.
Sure.
So let's do that. I think I was trying to say that. So we've changed the signs. We corrected the type of... Yeah, okay, so we got the math and English language arts. So what do you mean by revision starts today?
I think we begin to recruit, you know, members onto the team, and we begin to put the process together to...
Again, we'll watch, we have April here because it's been on this document for a month or so, but we do need to have, get somebody hired, because we're actively recruiting for that position. So it may move to May, by the time you see this next time. You have the background, I'm over there, for that process to begin.
Well, I mean, we need, it needs to be adopted by the board.
Right, so maybe June, yeah.
So...
So switch it to May, we'll have, May eleventh, you'll come back with these. Does anybody see, obviously we corrected the times, but is there any other, anything skewed on this? Obviously, we...
Probably. Do you have the rest of the dates?
No, I'm just slowing down, I think so.
Well, let's just go talk about, so math, English, you know, we'll bless this, starting at the May one. Everybody agrees, and I was around when we did math, English, math charts. So that's a correct date there. But basically, starting with the hiring of staffing and is, you know, is, is June twenty eighteen, you know, reasonable? I mean, given the classes?
I mean, if we slip April to May, I would guess that we'll add it to the background as well.
Okay, but even though...
Yeah, we may be able to finish sooner, but I don't, you know, and then we'll bring them to the board at that point in time.
Okay.
The rest of the dates that would at a minimum need to go to May. Do you have the staff and capacity to do this?
I'm really glad you brought that up.
It doesn't sound doable, and so I wanted to pass something that's realistic.
And I couldn't agree with you more. The two that we hear, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the two that we hear the most about for, from the field, actually begging the department to revise, is health education and social studies. They're woefully out of date, as you can see, so it loses a lot. We did talk about looking at health and physical education at the same time, because there is, of course, some overlap in here. Computer science, actually, Helen. David Benidetta, who's been before you before, is already really looking at, and she's already kind of engaged in this process. He's talked to you about that. But certainly we don't want to go into the formal process that we have outlined here for that particular thing. We talked about doing computer science and ICT at the same time because of that connection in there, too.
They're all trying to, what do you say?
I have, it's not making my belly feel very good.
To be fair to say, as well, because we've got on the, on the computer science and the ICT, you know, David will be a much more active participant in moving in that, so...
We just don't have anybody in math anymore.
Okay, so let's do this. I don't want to have unrealistic time periods. I mean, asking a lot of the process, I'd be sure of that. I don't want to set anybody up for failure. So what I would suggest is you and the commissioner and your team get together, come back at the May date, you know, with these dates. Obviously, you know, health education, social studies, and of course, you know, math and English language arts. But you look at rural languages, it hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety-seven, so there's something there as well. So I would guess, given the realities of staffing, I want to set anybody for failure. I mean, if you don't have, you can't make bricks without a straw, I'm not being a chivalry. So I would ask you to come back, have any done a resource analysis with your team, and then prioritize these for us as well. So I'm not saying this, but if social studies has priority over math, you know, whatever. And I know everything's a number one priority, but at some point... It's like when people come into my office at Delta and they say, if these ten projects aren't done, the company's going to fail, and then we only do two. It's picking the right two, is what I'm saying, and of course, we...
I'm sure, I'm sure, we don't have to do things on that.
Right, so come back with dates that meet your resources, and I think you'll find a reasonable board. And we actually did you a favor, because you don't have to worry about science for a while.
And as you prioritize these, obviously, the computer science and the tech, you know, there's nothing, like, we don't have enough. So that will take a while, obviously, but health education...
I can tell we feel really good about it.
Yeah, when you say health education...
Let them do their job, they're, I mean...
I know, but what I'm saying is, health education, as we know, having been on a board for twenty something years and involved even more than that, that will need such tremendous amounts of public input, because this is a topic, so make sure that you have a long enough timeline on that.
Thank you.
If nothing else, they've already get the public input on all of these, not just that. So maybe...
So I would just like to be clear about how we're meeting. I think the schedule and, obviously, everything is planned, set up. But before you undertake any of these standards review, you need to present the board a plan for that specific one. With a timeline and budget, a source of funds, and the use of the fund.
I mean, there's going to be zero budget.
Yeah, this is the internal staff.
The budget can't be there. If it's a hundred percent of your time, or two percent, or whatever it is, it's got to be a real budget.
Okay, but Bill, okay, good understanding.
Right, Will? Exactly, so it's up to the Commissioner and Heather to gauge the resources, put the dates. Obviously, just doing that analysis, you won't be able to touch anything until the committee board. We got the message, and specifically, if you say, we really got to get started, you know, on June first with math, English language arts, for example, or social studies, whatever you say, what Bill's saying on those specific ones that get higher priority, you know, they'll need a little bit more detailed plan, but that's your job, so, okay?
There is no budget for it. No resource, there's no such thing as one of these processes. There's no supplementation for anything. So if there's no budget for it, there's no process.
So our point is, we will go through a rigorous and effective standard setting process to establish high academic standards for our students in New Hampshire. And we will make sure that you, as a board, are able to fulfill your fiduciary responsibility to make sure that you approve high academic standards for the students in New Hampshire. That's, I guess...
Oh, yeah, right, and...
Over the way, have Heather been managing this well for a while? And so we'll continue to manage these processes well.
No, I know that you will do that. Our fiduciary responsibility includes if it's no budget, because nobody will spend, that's not that. So whatever it really is for the stat line and other expenses.
We can put that together, Bill, but as you know, we're not, we're not going to be asking for money.
Right.
Okay, Bill, we got it, Bill, we got to move on.
It's a feasibility issue. If you can't undertake it, then we need to consider that whether or not it's feasible for you to undertake to review, so...
If that's our responsibility to go through a rigorous process to deliver a strong standard for it.
There is no rigorous process without a budget, a sign up, right? Without whatever, staff investment, whatever combination of...
We got the message, and of course, they know that I'm going to ask, you know, when, where are all the upper forum meetings? So obviously, there's got to be staff to do that. So I'm confident you'll come back to us with that resource assessment and deadlines that are realistic. Because we don't want to set anybody up for failure or ask you to do the impossible, so... Okay, now we'll flip back to see. So the RFP process, so there is a lot of input, and I believe this RFP document includes the input that we got from the board, is that correct?
I think we received RFP from the board.
Who are you quoting from any of them?
Well, I mean, the term...
Yeah.
So this is the responsibility of the department. So I didn't want us, not, obviously, we've all read it, we don't have to go through it, but...
So I'd like to highlight a couple of the things that we did in here in order to try and be responsive to some of the feedback that we have received from the field in terms of the assessment process. And so first of all, I think it's important that we just note that the reason why this contract will be for us is because the current contract expires. And so we, obviously, the executive council on a significant contract like this wants to make sure we go through a very rigorous process, and by statute, we're required to go through that process. And so that's what we have tried to do here.
There's no option, we know the option on this contract.
Correct. So what we have done is, as we put this together, again, trying to be responsive to the feedback we got from the field, as well as some of the potential flexibility that we might get under ESSA, as well as reflecting a concern about the effectiveness of summative assessments, is that we have asked for interim types of assessment streams to be available in here so that, the way that that works now is everyone's doing their summative assessment at the, at a certain time. And I will tell you, I've been in some of the schools, and it is, it is, it can be discouraging to see that you have third graders who are doing four days in a row of testing for as much as four or five hours per day. And so it's hard to imagine that at the end of that process, we're getting a good assessment in terms of the academic performance of the students, not knowing the various conditions in which the students come in on each given day, if they might be ill, or if they've had difficulties with their parents. So we have asked that we have the ability and access to interim streams so that we can pull down various assessment streams throughout the year, that the schools can then use and can potentially integrate into their curricular activities, too, so that the assessment process doesn't become disruptive to the curricular process, but actually integrates with it and becomes part of it. And we believe that there is potential under ESSA to be able to use that type of an approach such that we can then possibly aggregate interim types of assessments to create a composite score that we can use to report to the federal government in terms of our assessment. So I just think that is one of the valuable and one of the important things that we have incorporated in here. Another aspect that I think is important as well and is incorporated into this assessment is the idea of, you know, looking at the ability to machine score writing scores for students, you know, because I think it's really important that students are able to communicate effectively, particularly in a DLA, and to be able to provide timely feedback to students about that. And so we have, you know, sought to be able to tie in assessment tools because a lot of the technology has advanced quite a bit so that you can actually assess writing. We're not trying to create Shakespeare's here, but we can get some good analysis and feedback to, to the educators and to the parents about the written communications capabilities of the students. And then a third thing that I guess I want to highlight in here is the looking for an assessment tool that is going to allow us to provide timely and easily understood feedback, both to educators so that that can become formative for the students. As we know, that some of the smarter balance feedback is coming, you know, sometimes in the next academic year, so it's not very useful in terms of trying to be formative for those particular students. And as well, I want to see feedback get back to parents quickly so that the parents are engaged in that process and understanding how that assessment process is working for their particular students. And so we want that feedback to be timely and accessible to the parents so that they can understand it and be engaged in the student process. So those are some of the highlights I think I would make.
Is this timetable on page four? So Cindy, we're starting out like twenty days.
As great as it's been out now, it's been a reality like a week and a half now. So this is, so we're getting something like, is that like a true, yeah, twenty six, figure of months?
So that's, this is, okay, good.
What was the original cost of the smart balance assessment?
It was two point two five million.
Last year, the cost, yeah. I can tell you what the cost last year was, two point five four two.
So is that a yearly cost?
Yes.
And so the three million that's attached to this RFP is a yearly cost?
Yeah, it will also not have this science.
Not to exceed. But this wraps in the science as well.
Last year's science was one point three two. So is it okay? So this, so with this, as a, you know, three content areas, or with smart balance? It seems like it's more... Or we think so.
You're doing great, no worries.
Well done.
We call you Rosemary.
Multitasking. So am I understanding that today, transfers, the Y block, there's going to be just constant already?
So whenever we do a major RFP of this amount, we always do an optional vendor conference. Most states, well, actually, I don't know if any state doesn't do a vendor conference. It's a bit, availability for vendors to participate and ask questions in a very open and transparent way. We document those questions, we provide the answers to those questions, post those up where any vendors that decide not to participate in the vendor conference is not, it is optional. It's not a requirement, but it's something that is available to them. We usually do it about a week or so after the RFP is done.
I mean, I can understand if the contract was up or something, but it just seems like a week, just meant two weeks ago, and we didn't hear a word one that I remember. I mean, Helen listened to all the tapes, and a seventy-year-old memory sometimes is to remember things, but I don't remember hearing anything, and it seems like, whoo, the process is like taken off. I mean, I know this is a purview of the department, not board, but...
Certainly hasn't been that way for us, but we certainly need to be much more aware and ensure that information documented. We had to talk about it previously, about the contract to close, and you need to either do a sole source contract or move forward with a, with an RFP, which is always much more meaningful to the...
And I think, Cindy, I'll tell you that this is something that hit my radar over the days of coming on board, like, okay, we have this contract just coming up. And, I mean, even just yesterday, I publicly signed, you know, ten or fifteen GNC contract items. So there's contracts coming up on a regular basis that we're, you know, we're reviewing, we're bidding, we're evaluating, just to keep the function functioning. we're reviewing, we're bidding, we're evaluating, just to keep the function functioning.
I mean, I just, you know, since we're looking at the standards, it seems like that, you know, the, the value of any type of a test, and when I talk to several superintendents, just about, you know, and not necessarily this, but testing, their being request or ask is, can we test every other year? Why do we, I don't know, the ESSA requires us to test every single year and.
It does, we do.
Or we should.
But again, to your point, Cindy, I think that's one of the things we're trying to work on, is if we can get these interim streams, so then the testing becomes integrated into curricular activities, and it's not a, you know, you teach the kids and then you have the assessment, so can we integrate this stuff, so that it is much more fluid?
That's what PES does, I just, it's a natural, organic part of the system. But, you know, since we're looking at the standards, so we're gonna ask a group, a testing group, okay, we want you to give us something that really is relating to our standards now, spend all this money and time and effort and psychometric experts and all those people that do those things, and then we're gonna turn around, the standards change, and then we want you to redo the whole process again, it just seems like, boy, we spent a lot of time preparing our districts. I mean, you weren't here for the process with the smarter balance, we spent years discussing, got so much feedback from all the stakeholders groups and the schools and the superintendents and the principals, and then we did pilot tests in many of the schools, and we responded to, to smarter balance on the pilot tests and gave them recommendations of what was problematic and what wasn't, and, and then here again, the professional development in the districts and this kind of stuff, making sure that we were ready for that, making sure they had everything ready. This seems really fast compared to all the work that went into.
So I'll tell you, so one thing that we have put in here as well, so, and I don't, I wasn't around for when the initial contract was negotiated, and we don't know, I mean, smarter balance, I assume, is going to bid on this contract along with a number of other vendors as well, but in this contract, we did have, we have a three-year term with a three-year extension, are the terms that we're looking for, so that we don't have, you know, potentially a disruptive process if we, you guys, we go forward.
Actually, I think there was so much input from, you know, I went to some of that work with the Principals Association and Principal Year, and I went to some of their conferences, and there was people, before we ever started, you know, before we instituted the test, there was all these conversations going with the Superintendent's Association, the Principals Association, and teachers and districts, and, and, you know, I presented for our board here at a conference on National Association of Words of Education, and there was so much that went into the process ahead of time. So all of a sudden, getting this one that would come on next, next year, it seems like, if it dramatically changes, it would be kind of, here again, whiplash, whatever, but just my thoughts.
Can't comment on that because I'm just coming into that, I'm about to fire him, so.
Well.
What is the waiver process with ESSA like? What do you expect that from that process?
So I don't know if I actually need a waiver for the interim assessments, and actually, you guys can probably comment better, there's just been some discussion that that may be an allowable function, so it may not be a waiver, in fact.
And so with, with the other states, it seems actually we have the one summative assessment, or you can have interim assessments. We, the, I don't know of any state actually right now that is doing the interim one way. Mostly, apparently, hasn't really been an allowability in the elementary education act in the past. But it is now, and it's something, because school districts have asked us to look at all different things that we are looking at. Going into this next year, I don't foresee, you know, moving down the path, but it's something that we've not, haven't particularly been able to know, or interested in, I'm trying to be present in part of the, I said, well, how many say? But yes, so it is an option that we wouldn't have to apply for a waiver, we just have to be consistent in our policy.
So Bill, and then we'll, then we need to move on, I mean, this, the reality is, the contract was up, we needed to do an RFP. That's.
No, we didn't need to do an RFP, right?
Do a one-year extension?
Done a sole source contract and have the same system.
For one year at least.
But, so I will tell you that the general, the GNC has been very adamant about bringing sole source contracts forward.
I get it, I get it, but, under these conditions, if I were making the case to the GNC, I would say, this way of doing it will be deeply disruptive to the field and incur legal risks and cost risks that I advise you, GNC, that we should not do, and if we were to take the more orderly approach of continuing with smarter balance for the twenty eighteen, nineteen year, is that what it is, twenty eighteen, nineteen? Seventeen eighties. And while we are reviewing the standards, and use that time to engage the field in a way that Cindy and everybody around the table has experience, and, and the field has experience, it's only, only process that are familiar with after these past eight years, of being consulted, being involved, parents, students, superintendents, teachers, all be involved in tuning the notion of what we might need if we wanted to improve on the smarter balance, and it would be able to match the new standards. I've never before heard of a process in which you hire the vendor first and then change the standards. So, and of course, there are many things in the RFP that, because of this odd setup, limit of your option. We pretty well have to get an optishad test to be ready, if there's any chance, the best chance is that it's kind of a problem, but if there's any chance of administering this test next spring, pretty well gotta be an optishad test. But the same vendor is then required to make a potentially substantial modification of unknown scale to match the revised standards in the following year, thus incur a change order of some untermal amount. So it, so the question off the top, it has to be, why leap into this? There's no input from the field, no suggestion from the field that we need to change tests. There is, nobody likes the test, so we start there, and we wish we didn't have the kids spend such time being tested. But having just spent, now, the second year last year, starting to emerge on the flat ground and the implementation pickups are over and the task is growing, now we have the third year, and there's the prospect of changing again in the future, which they won't know what the test is or what it, what the implications are for the classroom or any other thing until the end, some, some, like return to school. So it seems to me that the department has gone through a lot of unnecessary risks and disrobed of the field in order to avoid a sole source contract to smarter balance for the next year, in order to have a much more orderly process in the future. I wouldn't have any thought selling that to these.
So thank you for that feedback, I appreciate it.
Okay, Helen?
I'm a bit concerned, I not quite like the science, but this just sort of sounds to me like we are going to end up with uncertainty and confusion in the field because they've sort of just gotten through the smarter balance period. If we are gonna go through, we are looking at the English, English language and math standards, where there's likely to be changes, and there's gonna need to be another change in a year, I, I don't see the utility of doing that to, to the field, and we haven't gotten the feedback. We have looked up through the processes that this department is really known for, of gathering the feedback, listening to stakeholders, understanding needs, and it, it, it feels like it's putting the cart before the horse unnecessarily. Understanding the contract's expired, that, God, we have to do something. But why wouldn't we propose smarter balance again for at least a year? When we go through the standards review, have the opportunity to do what this department is known for, get the feedback, and not create that potential confusion and change in the field? It just feels unnecessary at this point in time.
One more, I think, I probably made a short, the, you know, in all the work with the curriculum, many sense of it, we always talk about longitudinal, tutel studies, and we always say we need, you know, a three-year cycle to really make real analysis of where we need to do, and make our data-making decisions as far as curriculum and everything like that, and to only have the two-year, and then to go to one year different, and then go to another one maybe after we change the standards, there is very little value in that to our districts. It's, it will take like four or five years out before we start to see the point at which the curriculum decisions can be made on the data and how these longitudinal studies have shown us where we need to work, you know, and this is.
I'd like to respond to the longitudinal because I think that that is an important consideration, and one of the things that I find, you know, curious is that when we adopted the smarter balance, even though we have been working with it, we still feel that they have no longitudinal data, whereas there are other, there are assessment tools in the field today that, when our students engage with them, they will immediately provide us longitudinal information towards college and career readiness. So I would hope that that would be something that as we get the different proposals in, we can look at.
Anne, and then I'll summarize.
I wonder whether or not it, it would hook us to implement a new assessment and then change the standards because for a, an educator, they're distinctly different. One is, is a mechanism reusing for assessing, and then the other one is a set of standards that you are trying to get your students to, correct? So if we were to expect our educators to do both at the exact same time, isn't that a bigger mountain to climb than to change the assessment protocol and then say, okay, we got that down, and now we're, we're going to improve or increase, or maybe it won't be that large a change to it, but I see them as two extremely distinct things, and as an educator, it might be nice to have them separated.
Couple of points about sole source. This proposal isn't three plus three, it's four plus three, so it's the longest testing proposal that I've ever, you know, the longest term, and it has a built-in sole source.
As a renewable option, that can be negotiated.
AKA.
Again, I'm trying to avoid a situation.
AKA sole source. So, under the rubric of avoiding sole source, you are speedily, with no input, with long standards in place and all the rest, wanting to hire a vendor who, whose initial contract would be four years and could be made during the period. So, with logic overall, if you put it together, I would add a couple of things. The interim, one of the points I made in the memo, and I won't read it in detail, but the, the notion of using interim assessments to replace or semi, even semi-replace the annual assessment has been tried even, of course, by PACC and one others, and considered a real failure because the, because it drove curriculum, like, we're about standards, but schools are about curriculum, and it had the effect of telling you what to teach when in a year, and CCSSO released a study called Using Inter, Just Using Interim Assessments in Place of Summative Assessments, Question Mark, Considerations as an Option, and its conclusion was, implementing a system of interim assessments will require sustained, multi-year effort that goes above and beyond that currently involved in typical summative assessment programs, and they go into all these details of underlying, it looks good in the service, and the work in reality.
So just to comment on that, because the goal here is not to have a top-down approach, but to create the interim option available to local school boards to make a decision about what's best for those communities.
So if it's just an option, that's fine, but the whole thing is a top-down approach, right? The whole thing has had no consult, no call from the field about it being necessary, no consultation from the field, and in fact, the board didn't know about it, except, you mentioned it in the passage at last meeting, and so, so we start with a top-down summative assessment and kind of amplify that with a process in which the field.
Okay, so, we're not gonna summarize, but balance assessment is responding to this RFP, right?
We, we would have no idea.
You don't have.
We're in the middle of our. But I'm just saying that we, we still could have the continuity if they come up with the best.
We don't have.
Okay, that's, just wanna make sure I'm clear on that. So, I know Commissioner Smart, he's heard the sole source argument, the risk, Bill, that you mentioned, the confusion, Helen, that you mentioned, you saying that, the, the longitudinal points that you made, Cindy, so ultimately, he is aware of our expert advice, business, busy management department for matter. I think the points were really well taken in terms of risk and fusion, perhaps longitudinal thing has been addressed, and then ultimately, it's, it's Commissioner's responsibility. So he's heard that loud and clear, and I'm sure that upon reflection, if you, and he ultimately wants to make the sole source argument to the GNC, he will, we've given them our expert advice, that may be more costly, maybe more confusing, et cetera, and then we have to move on to the luncheon one o'clock meeting today, how's that?
That's all Sandy, wasn't it?
I just wanna point out that the commissioner has my memo, others may have other input, that identifies a dozen costs to lead to this approach. It's, it's, the commissioner's prerogative to proceed as he desires, but it needs to be on the record that those risks, I think those effects are ugly, now we can discuss them and I can be wrong.
So then those. So then I will just add on the record as well, that as interested as this board today is in this process, before I came on as commissioner, I did not, I'm not sure why, it would seem to me, Bill, that that, this is a matter that this board would have taken up, if there's this height of interest in it, that this board would have taken up, you know, back in October or something like that, rather than come to us when we're already in an expired contract to express this, so I'll just put that on the record.
We, yes, and on the record, respond that we consider it under control by the department, but this looks like a very bad, under control process to me, whereas previously, the, the department had a longitudinal.
Okay, so, like I said, I think, I'm not being as articulate as I normally am, because I did say that all of those concerns, the longitudinal, the risk, the confusion, the commissioner has heard those, they were already on the record because they were mentioned, so we don't have to repeat that, and ultimately, it's the department's decision. So, but I think we're on the record, there's a great memo that goes, put his opinions on the risk, et cetera, we have that, but obviously, limited resources and so forth. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna do something that, who require more risk and resources, but ultimately, that's the, the responsibility. So, let's just take a four-minute break, twenty-five of one, and.